...attention, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. It's good to see everyone this afternoon. It's always good to see a full house at a city council meeting, so we're glad to have all of you with us tonight. In case you would like to know, there are agendas on the podium in the back here, and if there's anyone who would like to address the council during the citizens' input, we do ask that you sign in, and there's a sign-in sheet there on the podium. So, that being said, the first thing that we'll be doing this evening is a public hearing concerning our community development block grant, and Jessica, do you want to handle that for us to start with?
Sure. The City of Tifton received CDBG funds in the amount of three hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. This was approved to assist for acquisition and clearance of three twenty-five and three twenty-seven Commerce Way. The city will be providing a match support on the project totaling one hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. The total project cost is estimated at five hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. They will acquire the property, clear the property for construction of a downtown parking area. Does anyone have any questions or comments in relation to the project, the proposed project? Seeing none?
Okay, we'll call the public meeting closed. At this point, we'll call our city council meeting to order, and I'd just like to inform everyone, councilman Aylers, Vice Mayor Aylers will be coming in in just a few minutes. He's actually running a little bit late tonight. He is at a fundraiser, so we gave him a reprieve from being here on time, but he should be coming in at any time. Our first order of business is always to start our meeting with a prayer and a pledge, and if you would please join me by bowing your heads, we'll start with our prayer. Heavenly Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who were gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings, thank you for life itself, for the measure of health. We need to fulfill our callings for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. You have established authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for this council, for our management team, and for every employee. I'm asking you that you would graciously grant us all wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, a confidence in doing what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in our lives, and joy in our task. I pray for this agenda that you've set before us today. Please give us assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Tifton. It is in your most blessed name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I would ask that you please stand and face the flag to the collectible legends.
I collect the legends to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, gentlemen, you have before you a copy of our agenda for the evening. I will take a motion to approve or to make any changes.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I believe we have had one item withdrawn from the agenda. I do want to point that out. Item number sixteen has been withdrawn from the agenda for this evening, so I'm assuming your motion is with that.
I move that changed.
Okay, all right, and your second, you're good, okay, with that changed, okay. With that considered, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have the approval of the agenda. We've been mailed our minutes from the May fifteenth regular meeting and the June fifth workshop meeting, so you've had a chance to review those. I'll take a motion inserting those to meeting minutes.
So moved.
All right, if a motion's our second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Excellent. All right, now, I would like to call Ms. Jessica. I get to do something fun, and I need a helper this evening, but Jessica is gonna help me. That's what I'm saying, right?
You're just in my position to that.
Jessica is Linda's friend, all right? Nothing. I thought I said. She's so pretty. She's pretty. I'm sorry, I should have been more sneaky. I didn't think about the fact that there could be more than one Jessica in this room of people. Okay, let's see, can you hold this one? Tonight, we get to honor two people who are retiring and two people who've meant a considerable amount to the city of Tifton, which I'm really kind of curious how we're going to handle things once they're gone. They have dedicated countless hours of their time, their talent, their energy, their effort, their ideas to making this community a better place, and so it's a privilege for us to stand before all of you this evening and honor them for their service to the community. All right, would you like to read this, or would you like me to read this? You want to read it again? How about I read the line and then you read the line? You want to do that? All right, let's, you read this first line of this, and I'll sort it. Yes, real loud, so everybody can hear it.
Proclamation celebrating Linda, one of yours thirty years of service.
I won't read it, some of you may not be able to hear it. Whereas, originally from Easton, Maryland, and being married to a truck driver, Linda Warrior and her family moved to Tifton County in May of nineteen seventy-six.
Whereas, after working for Ethel Dickens and holding various odd jobs, Linda began her career at the Tifton Police Department of September, July, and two days later.
Whereas, Linda has served our community for thirty years and has been a dedicated and honest employee during her employment.
Whereas, she is looking for giving a full-time housewife, mother, and grandmother while bringing home the children, the passion for, for all this local family. Do you call it GM both in?
Whereas, having enough to do with already planned and indicates remodeling her home and re-landscaping her property, Linda will stay busy but plans to spend her sister in Maryland and her son in Florida, and?
Whereas, Linda will be long remembered by her friends and coworkers for her commitment and devotion, that each individually, we wish her safe travels as she begins to make a retirement.
And now therefore be proclaimed that the city council of the city of Tifton celebrates Linda Warrior's third years of service to our community and wishes her the very best in her retirement. Proclaim this nineteenth day of June twenty-seventeen, signed by me and protested by this Jessica, our city clerk. Linda, congratulations. Come on up here. Thank you, and thank you. Can you come here and help me get? You just have a good time. We're so proud of you. Thank you so much. If you'd like to say a few words, I'm gonna jump tight, but sorry, I don't want to interrupt. Uh, Jessica, thank you, and I look forward to a very happy life. Thank you so much. Thirty years is a long time. We appreciate that service to the city. We have another special person that we're going to recognize this evening. You can front move. You want to stand up here, or you want to sit on the floor? Okay, go ahead. She's so to the point, you know? She'll be around, but... This proclamation is celebrating Beth Thatcher's thirty-nine years of service. She started here when she was... That's right. Whereas Beth Thatcher began her career with the city of Tifton in February in nineteen seventy-eight, where she started as an intern through a grant program, a grant-funded program while still in high school, and was hired full-time with positions and title changing throughout the years from clerk to liaison clerk, onto court clerk, and promoted to her current position of municipal court manager in two thousand and six. And whereas throughout her thirty-nine years of service, she has worked under five police chiefs, five municipal judges, and seven city managers. How to bless you. And whereas she has remained a dedicated and valuable employee, served as citizens of our community through the Tifton Police Department and the municipal court. And whereas Beth has devotedly fulfilled her duties as an employee for the city of Tifton, helping to establish best practices and skillfully representing the department. And whereas, once retired, Beth plans to spend time with her family and just enjoy life following where God leads. And whereas Beth will be long remembered by her friends and coworkers for her sense of humor, her wit, her charm, and her warm and understanding heart. And now therefore be proclaimed that the city council of the city of Tifton celebrates Beth Thatcher's thirty-nine years of service with the city of Tifton and wishes her the very best upon her retirement. Proclaim this nineteenth day of June twenty-seventeen. I'm over to you for your words of wisdom. I have to do a line too, but do a something, something for you, Ms. Beth. Where's Beth? Yeah. It is.
I think that could be. I've known this lady for a long time, her name is Tina, so y'all know y'all got to say y'all speak down for her. But the other point we give, and we call it a retirement blessing, by bothering that girl. You started on this journey so many years ago, and now it's time for you to leave behind their friends that you've come to know. You sought divine direction and a heart that was willed. Your work became your passion as you used your gifts and skills. You set high standards for yourself and others too, showing honor, pride, and dignity as we saw the best in you.
The rest of the original story may not be about mine. The precious thing you gained in life often comes from divine. So don't waste one minute wishing for things that might have been. Rather watch the stage, the planet grow, and feel its keys within. We pray God keeps you safe and well, whenever you may turn, surrounded by your loved ones, and living out the dreams you earned. And apply it from your heart when you hear God softly say, "My good and faithful servant, I'm proud of you this day, brother to a person that..."
Oh, and look, it just gets better.
I just want to say thank you to Beth, she's been there for me from day one, has helped me every step of the way, showed me who to trust, not to trust maybe a little bit, but I greatly appreciate you always handling this for me, even if it's at ten-thirty at night, she's always answering any questions I have, so I appreciate you. I'll still call you at night, so.
You told me I had four men. Lon, do you want to say a check?
Um, she's been through, it sounds like a bunch of chiefs, a bunch of city managers, but one favorite.
And they're all so stable.
One of my favorite term of offense words.
Oh, that wasn't there, I was like, is that?
Between time farcina and city blues is what, one, eight years?
Yes, a long time, a long time.
Got two good ones.
Yes, we do, yes, we do. And like I said, you are on sick down. Answer that phone. What'd you want to say?
You know, I guess I have to thank Milton Ring and Chief Troy Worley for starting my career, because after those two rides in back of the police car, my mom and dad kind of persuaded me that I need to take a different route. So that's where I started my career, and, uh...
Can't be enjoying.
That's right. And, uh, I thank the city putting up with me for all these years, and I'm gonna miss everybody. But I'm still here, me and Tina will be riding up down the road, looking for...
It might not be her last time in police cars, but I...
And, uh, we still have some connections, so, uh, but thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody, for coming today and being here for me and Linda, and, uh, it's gonna be good, though. Thank you, thank you.
Y'all gotta hold up just a minute. I can tell. Uh, y'all posted that for a period. I got my goodbye, yeah, okay, that'll be where I can look at you. Linda retired after thirty years, and when she retired, fifteen of our employees were not born yet. Beth retired after nearly forty years, thirty-one of our employees were not born yet. Some of us were still in junior high when you started. And as I said in the meeting the other day, some of our members' parents have not even met yet when you started. Now Linda's a very quiet, unassuming person, and if you hadn't seen her, you probably wouldn't know she was in the room. Uh, she is the picture of loyalty, dependability, and efficiency. Beth is not quiet. And Beth is the picture of, of, somebody help me here. You're just a picture, Willie. Mudshot comes to mind, but that's... Uh, but Beth has a very big and caring heart. There are some of us at the police department who spend a lot of time crying on her shoulder. Hey, what can I say? She's been a psychiatrist, a marriage counselor, relationship counselor, but most importantly, she's been a friend. Now I'm not gonna say and tell you ladies that I'm gonna miss you, and I'm certainly not gonna stand up here and say goodbye. First of all, you're not going anywhere. We should see each other enough that I should never have to miss you. You're gonna keep coming back. And of course, I'm not gonna say goodbye because you're family, and you never say goodbye to family. And a lot like LSU and Florida graduate, it's just 'cause we're formally separated, we're still brothers and sisters, so you're still part of the family, okay? We love you, and, uh, God bless you and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, ladies. It's, we will miss you very much, so, thank you. All righty, back to our items at hand. At this point on the agenda, we are at the citizen input. Jessica, did anybody sign in for citizen input? Did anybody want to address the council in any way? Okay. All right, the next item on our agendas are consent agenda, and, um, we have already discussed the items that are on the consent agenda. We do that every month at our workshops. I don't want there to be any misunderstanding. We haven't discussed these items, but we have analyzed and discussed them, and then at the workshop meetings, we don't vote. We don't vote for our regular council meeting, which is on the third Monday, which is tonight. So seeing the consent agenda that's before you, we can take them individually, or we can take them all together. I'll leave that up to your pleasure.
I'm moving to approve them all together.
Okay, we have a motion to approve all together. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote to approve all the consent agenda items as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Excellent, okay. Our next items on the agenda involve our resolutions, and the first item is the adopting of the FY twenty-eighteen budget. Wayne, you want to handle that?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, included in y'all's packet for this agenda was adopting the fiscal year eighteen budgets for the city of Tifton. Uh, I'd like to do a quick recap.
Nothing personal about that, Wayne.
No.
Darn.
He wasn't mad at you.
Does that happen when you get up to speak? Is the rent this?
Mm-hmm.
Wayne's over there like a...
They all leave, they don't like me.
I'd be a little...
That's why they hide me upstairs. Again, I'd like to recap the various budgets real quick for you. For fiscal year eighteen, our proposed budget for the general fund is thirteen million, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and one dollars. Our grant fund has a proposed budget of seven hundred and fifty thousand. Our hotel motel tax fund has one million, one oh seven, seven hundred dollars. Our confiscated assets fund has a fifteen thousand dollar budget. Special revenue fund has proposed budget of thirty-three thousand. Our capital projects fund has proposed budget of a million, twenty-one thousand dollars and sixty-nine. Splot's fund has proposed budget of eleven million, one hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. Our Tifton theater fund has a proposed budget of three hundred and five thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars. The water fund has a proposed budget of three million, five sixty-three, two hundred. The sewer fund has proposed budget of three million, eight hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars. The gas fund has proposed budget of four million, one hundred and eighty-one dollars, and, wait, excuse me, one hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, eight hundred and sixty-six. Our solid waste collection and disposal fund, three million, one thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. That total for all those funds is forty-two million, three hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars. One fund you may not see, we do have a budget for you, you do not see here, is our internal service fund. The reason it's not included in that top is because those particular expenditures of that fund is actually allocated out to all the various budgets that I mentioned above. Couple of highlights I want to, uh, point out, this year's budget, number one, the general fund balance bu- budget was balanced without any use of reserves. The balancing of that eighteen budget, we couldn't have done it without the reorganization that had taken place and the streamlining of the various departments that has occurred. In prior years, we were receiving approximately eight hundred thousand dollars in fees from the county to help with the fire department, which we no longer get, so we had to make up for that. The fiscal year in seventeen general fund budget was adopted utilizing over a million dollars of reserves just to balance it last year. So we are making great headway with not having to use it this year. And to give you a little thing, through June fifteenth of this year, the general fund had revenues exceeding expenditures by approximately a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And we project those revenues to actually come exceed the expenditures for the end of the year, and which will put us in a good place. And the last thing is, the fiscal year eighteen general fund budget was balanced without any anticipating in raising any fees or even raising the millage rate this year.
And so what was that last statement? I'm picking it.
The fiscal year eighteen general fund budget was balanced without anticipating raising any fees or the millage rate.
Excellent.
Couple of other things I wanted to point out was in our internal service fund, it got reorganized also, and the only fund, department left in that fund is our customer service fund department. And our water, and the last thing was our water fund is, we're looking at and making sure that it stays. Any changes there will mean any type of revenue neutral in the future, so. A couple of other dates I wanted to just remind you of, we're adopting the budget document tonight. This does not mean we're setting the millage rate tonight, ladies and gentlemen. Setting the millage rate will happen next month. We have not got our final digest yet. We should get it by the end of this month, to the first of July. Once we receive it, we will start calculating our rollbacks in the millage rate, and we're projected to set that millage rate at the next regular council meeting, which should be July seventeenth.
Any questions? I think we, I think we're good. Pete, did you have anything you needed to add?
I don't. Just to reiterate, in July, that that'll be before you, whether you want to have the public hearings or not, and we'll discuss that here in this work section.
Does this revised budget, copy, the same copy of revised budget we got before?
And actually, there was some changes were made between that last one and this one. Yes, sir, that's why you have a new one sitting in front of you.
And they're just minor, councilmen, they're just, they're very minor, nothing out of the ordinary.
Wes, do you have any questions?
Uh, the changes that I discussed with you and Pete, were those, any of those?
Some are. Some of them we're gonna wait, and I know like in the case of the credit card fees, when we went and looked to, towards the software companies that were doing that for us, and the original quote we got was going to eat up any savings we had. So right now, we're gonna wait until we convert to the new software for finance, and at the same time, we've already talked to a, one of the companies that are the software vendor we're going with, that does the credit card processing, they, we can convert to them at the same time, and then that would change over, and that would then be changed like we talked about.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions? Jack?
But it is a balanced budget.
Yeah.
That's great, that's good.
Do you need a balance?
Yes, sir.
To the penny. Okay. All right, if we have no further questions, um, at this point in time, we'll take a motion on the resolution adopting the FY twenty-eighteen.
So moved.
All right, and motions are second.
I'll second.
Motion's second. Any further discussion?
I do have one more question. Pete, you may be able to answer this more. Let me remind, my concern was the fire department and the amount of staff that we're gonna have. We're going to maintain the staff levels with this budget?
Yes, current, current staff level is plus. It'll give Chief and I only six months to, you know, observe shifts, personnel, stations, and within that timeframe, we should be able to have a plan with the new software is in to come to you, and if there's something that we need, we're gonna announce it.
So that's a minimum of ten men per shift, is that correct?
It'll be nine and eight, so I don't know that it's not ten, but it's, it's current level is, we have nine on shift, we have eight on shift, but everything is covered with regards to daily activities, operations, vacations, exactly.
I mean, I think there was some concern that, uh, that ten would be appropriate staffing level. I mean, that was my understanding. I think Frank, you had made some mention about staffing as well.
Right.
Feeling that ten was probably an appropriate level or a minimum. Jack, I think you had some words about that too, and finding ways to, um, to get us to be able to fund ten. So that was kind of where my question was earlier, did my, you know, I know you said some of them did, some of them didn't. I guess some of them didn't was my staffing concern.
Again, this six months is gonna tell the tale, and based off of the needs of the fire department, we certainly, you know, recommend that based off of Chief's assessment. So with that, there is, there is some leverage that we'll have with, and those are the questions you have. We'll have available money if we need to put...
So the money is there if we need...
Money's there, yes. And that, that will be another, I guess, point, that if you decide to take advantage of the rollback, or if you want to reduce the leverage, that'll be part of that. So if, if we choose to roll it back, then I'll have to look inside the budget even more in the tune of a hundred and, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so.
Rollback, I mean.
Over the minute.
Minute.
If you, if you keep it the same, keep it the same, we'll be fine with regards to that one. And so how about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars? So if we roll it back, then we'll have to look inward, all those things that you had mentioned, so.
How will we roll it?
How, how will we? Because it was gonna, it'd be more money because then we have to drop the millage, the fifty dollars with the back end there.
So you're saying, Pete, for six months, you and the chief will look at the situation and decide whether it needs to be adjusted or not?
Absolutely, that's, that's correct. And I think he, he's evaluating now and what we're focusing on, just like uniform patrol and the police. We're making sure that we have what's required on the shifts for, not only for safety, but for the stations, and Chief needs a couple of months to understand that, and he's, he is doing that every, every week, assessing the, the hours, the shifts, the vacation, the planning for that. And we have talked about specifically, and within six months, we will certainly have a recommendation to you. If, if he feels that we're two, three short, then, then that's what we'll come to you and say, that's what we found. And the money obviously will be coming from that budget, from the savings in certain areas.
So, excuse me, Wes, you asked about the shift, nine or ten?
Yeah, that's right. So what I'm saying is a minimum of ten. I think it's at eleven right now, if I'm not mistaken. So going down to nine, there's two people per shift that's not gonna be there. All right, so, you know, I think they have a two-in, two-out rule. And so that's, that's the only thing that was very concerning for me, because these guys go into a burning building, especially when it's hot outside. Uh, if they get tired, you have less people that can take that position. Now, I know we're gonna utilize volunteer firemen, but you have to also understand, we, we need the full-time guys there. We can't always just rely on the volunteers. Now, we appreciate what those volunteers do for us, don't get me wrong, but, you know, that, that was my concern, that was my only concern.
Well, my, my concern too, that we got the full-time firefighters. We, I mean, what I'm saying, like you said, there are going to be some volunteers, but we need to, to make... My, my concern too, that we got the full-time firefighters, we, I mean, what I'm saying, you, like you said, there are going to be some volunteers, but we need to, to make sure that we got the money. And whatever we need, uh, whatever we need for the ten, if we need the ten, or nine, whatever.
All right, so could the motion be amended to say, accept the budget? Well, no, I guess we couldn't do that.
Yeah, because then you're not accepting the whole budget.
Right.
The budget is, I'd like to focus on sort of the positive parts of it, the budget is balanced, we do have the ability to amend the budget with cause later in the year. And I do think giving Chief Bennett the opportunity to really evaluate and, and, you know, the, I think that, um, we're at a point with our, all of our public safety, that we don't necessarily have to conduct ourselves business as usual. I think there's, you know, ways to work, um, with the talent that we have and with, you know, with the budget that we have. But I, I do think we need to go ahead and approve the budget as presented, with the understanding that Pete and Chief Bennett are, and Chief Dowdy, you know, from the Police Department side, are tasked with the responsibility of continuing to make sure that, um, public safety, both Fire and Police Department are of the utmost importance to us, and that we have the staffing that's there to manage a community of this size and the resources that they need to do that.
Well, I know Chief Dowdy has the resources in his budget to hire additional police officers, I'm just making sure that we have that same
Right.
ability in the Fire Department's budget.
And I don't think anybody disagrees with that, but I think we need, we're on a time constraint to approve a balanced budget, they don't have the time. You know, they need, they need further evaluation and can bring something back to us, at which point in time, we can amend the budget if necessary. Now, that means finding the money, but, um, that's, you know, that's...
It needs to be sooner rather than later.
Yes.
With the understanding that safety has to come first, and, and, safety is above anything else. If it's a safety issue, we will find the money somehow, because we cannot sacrifice safety.
I don't think this community would have a problem whatsoever if the millage rate got increased for public safety expense. I know I wouldn't if I was, if I was not on this council, and somebody said, hey, we're gonna raise the millage rate a quarter of a mil to make sure that these fire departments are fully staffed, I would not have an issue with that.
And we'll know that in July, so if that's sooner, and if that's the case...
That's all right.
In July, okay.
We'll march on, yeah, in one month, and we'll, uh, we'll have that, we'll have that ready to go, um, when, when the chief is, is ready.
Okay, so that being said, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the twenty eighteen budget as submitted with these items of discussion, as a side note, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. All right, item number twelve on our agenda is the resolution equalizing base water rates for city and county customers.
Mayor, in light of current actions and comments by county officials concerning this matter, I move to table this until our next meeting on July seventeen, twenty seventeen.
I'll second.
Okay, um, we have a motion to table equalizing base water rates, and we have a second. And, um, and now I'm gonna open the floor for discussion, and I would like to take a few minutes to, uh, address the community and the council. And I have written my statements so that I can be sure not to leave anything out, and that I can provide the information that I need. So bear with me as I read a statement to the community on behalf of myself and the City of Tifton. And where's Eve? Is Eve over there? I'll give you a copy of this if you would like.
I was gonna go to bed.
You are? All right, uh, very seriously, if you remember about a year and a half ago, the county began scrutinizing the City of Tifton as to how the fire department was being run, and the county alleged they were not getting what they paid for. The county also told us that they were unable to work with certain members of our staff, so hesitantly, we made personnel changes, which we were told could improve the working relationship between the city and the county, while attempting to discover what we could do to improve fire operations. To no avail, the county made a decision to spend over four point two million dollars of taxpayer money to create a new fire department, and abandoned the joint agreement we had in place. As a council and as a city, we accepted that and moved on. However, now after looking back, after making more personnel changes based on the claim that the county could not work with them, and that these individuals were a problem for us in not getting along, today, after all of these changes, there has been no change in the county's willingness to work together for the common good of both city and county residents. In fact, I believe the lack of communication is as bad as I've ever seen it. This tells me that the problem is and has been with the current county administrator, Mr. Jim Carter. The resolution for the council is a prime example. On March the sixth, twenty seventeen, the city made the decision to terminate the joint wa- water wastewater agreement with the county. It was determined by this council that the agreement was outdated, and that the city should operate its water wastewater operation as a city-only utility, reverting back to the way it was before the agreement in two thousand and five. However, in doing so, the city informed the county that it remains committed, and I want you to really hear this, we remain committed to continue servicing county residents and to continue to work with the county in considering further expansions and improvements to the water and wastewater system. That message was delivered in a mayor, I mean, a letter from me, the mayor, to the County Commission Chairman. This decision was based on what the council considered best for its constituents while causing no adverse impact upon county residents. And I will repeat that, no adverse impact upon county residents. Essentially, the decisions of passports and commissions are no different than what decision is being made with respect to the inter-local agreement for water and sewer. Things do change over time. Notwithstanding the decision to terminate the joint water and wastewater agreement, the city has proposed in this resolution that we're talking about tonight, to equalize the base rates between the city and county customers as a good-faith solution, since no action has been taken in over ten years. This was mentioned to the county manager and to the county chairman four months ago, but we haven't heard anything back from them until now. Our commitment would increase the monthly base rate on city residents. Increase the base rate for city residents from seven dollars and seventy-two cents to nine dollars and eleven cents. And would reduce the base rate for county residents from eleven dollars and forty-nine cents to nine dollars and eleven cents. Those two numbers are equal. If that is not a fair start in working together, then I evidently am not sure if it is. Amazingly, the city's efforts to reduce the rates to county residents have been met with disparaging editorials in the paper by Commissioner Robert Setters, and threats by Brady Thompson, the County Commission Chairman, to sue the City of Tifton. As a matter of fact, the words were, you all will serve jail time. Mr. Setters only told you half the story in his article in the Tifton Gazette. I can't help but wonder if he speaks for everyone for the County Commission. Some say he does, some say he doesn't, you beat the judge. Just last year alone, the county attorney collected over three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Let that number sink in for just a minute. Three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in taxpayer money. Do you think another threat of a lawsuit is good for anybody except the county attorney? I don't. That's your money, boys and girls, that is your tax dollar. Your tax dollar, that's how they choose to use that. Most disappointingly, the County Commission Chairman has informed me that the county is not going to be calling for the referendum in public vote on Splost Six this November. Your right to vote. The county administrator is removing your right to vote. This could be considered a form of coercion, or it's, maybe it's just dirty politics. Either way, if this happens, if Splost is not put on the ballot for you, the citizens of Tifton, to vote upon, it will not only affect the citizens of the City of Tifton, but the cities of Tata and Omega. And the great irony is ultimately the county itself. It will also impact the Tifton County Development Authority and the Downtown Development Authority, all of us who rely on Splost, the most fair tax that is out there, of which probably seventy percent is paid from out-of-towners. It, it removes that from our budgets, all those projects down the drain. I'm not willing to risk that, and I know that the other cities are not willing to risk that. Over sixty million dollars were collected from this existing one penny tax, do you know how many pennies it takes to get to sixty million dollars? You vote on it, citizens, and they are taking away your right to vote for these projects that have significant impact upon this community. I do not see how this could be rational, nor how the county leaders could make such comments. And I would encourage you, the public, and the business leaders to start asking questions. However, despite the misguided path that the county manager, Mr. Carter, is on, the city fully intends to maintain the direction and course of conduct which represents what is best for this city. I'd like to repeat that again, this city fully intends to stay the course, to do what is right, to serve this community, to provide open, honest discussion, to make available to you any record, any email, any information that you would like to see, because we, the City of Tifton, have nothing to hide. And my message to the county attorney, and to the county administrator, and to Chairman Thompson, you wanna see us in jail, bring it on. Bring it on if you think you can sue us and, and, and carry us down that path. If that's what you think is best for this community, we'll see you in court, because we have nothing on our side but a good, honest, open, ethical, and legal representation, and there's nothing better than a good off- offense than the truth, and that's what we have. We will also consider the desires and the needs and the efforts of our county residents. Every citizen that belongs as a resident of this city, every citizen of the City of Tata and every citizen of the cities of, of Omega is a county resident. So county officials do not mistake when we talk about working together, we are part of your county, we pay county taxes, we expect county representation. And I'm tired personally of the division, the divisiveness, and the misdirection of what is happening within our county, and the impact it has on you, the citizens of Tifton. We will continue again to work for what is good for our entire community, regardless of your address. I don't care if your address is Route One, Box Twelve, in the middle of nowhere, or you live right here on Main Street. I don't care if you live in Tata or Omega, you have our commitment that we will work for what is good for this community. The City of Tifton has been bullied too long, and I will not stand for it any longer. I will not tolerate letters to the editor with innuendo and half-truths. I will not tolerate threats of lawsuits, and I will not have this council be accused of unethical and illegal activity when I know for a fact that is not true. We call upon all the members of the County Commission to work with us in these efforts, every one of you were elected to serve this community. You took that on when you filed that claim that you were gonna run for office, and you paid that qualifying fee, and you ran, and you were elected to your seat. Do your job. The lines of communication are open, we do not have a closed-door policy, we are here, ready to work together. We welcome your ideas, we welcome solutions for, from which everyone will benefit. But we cannot be at the table to negotiate if all you do is threaten and harass and bully. With that being said, my comments are now, uh, completed, Eve, here's your copy. Is there any further discussion from the council before I call for the vote?
I think you said, uh...
If you did, you're right.
Well, I want it, I want it crystal clear, I don't know if those cameras are running, I know that camera's running. We will not be bullied by the county anymore. The line is drawn, and it's over, it's done. City of Tifton, you're in fine shape, you got a balanced budget, you got an outstanding city manager, you got an excellent police chief, you've got a jam-up fire chief, you've got a fabulous, well, code of enforcement, what are you, whatever you are, but... I say all that to say...
Whatever you are.
Whatever you are, you said. Wayne, where's Wayne? The, the team is set, the team is in place to carry this community forward in ways that we have never even dreamed of. Every one of these councilmen bring a different talent and a different set of skills and different expertise to this table, and I am honored to serve with each one of them. You all have different districts who have different challenges, but together, that's what makes a City of Tifton. And I'll be damned, pardon my French, if I'm gonna be bullied for one more second. You can quote me on that, Eve, that would be a fabulous headline. So, that being said... That's not in your little copy there. That being said, we have a motion and a second on tabling equalizing the base rates for the city and county. I will call for the vote unless there's any further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. All right, now onto other better things, take a deep breath here, get me all fired up. Someone would like to bring Mr. Carter in, I'll take care of myself. Item number thirteen on our, uh, agenda is the resolution granting enterprise zone incentives to Southwest Georgia Bank for the property located at two oh five East Eighth Street. I know we've had some discussion about that, so, um, any, I know, Wes, you had some specific questions.
Yeah, Rob, did you ever check into that for me? I'm sorry, my concerns?
The, on the Enterprise Fund for the new bank.
Or somebody really sure, you know, what you were, you know, asked me about?
I've, I've been on vacation for a week, so...
Okay, uh, remember, uh, there was another, um, application, I guess, well, actually, it was, uh, it was never presented because it was already shot down before the application was taken, and it was a similar, uh, uh, service-type building or whatnot.
Right. By the way, saying that, that application would not have been, could not have passed as an enterprise zone application, if that's your question. This one, you know, as I understand it, meets the requirements as an enterprise zone.
Because they're hiring five people, that's it.
Exactly.
That's it, the only thing you gotta do is hire five people, and that was my question.
That's exactly right.
Okay. And that's a state law?
It is. And, but to your issue, I think it's a fair criticism of the way the law reads, and needs to be looked at from the state legislature.
I think I will write our representation and let them know of that change, okay?
Okay, well, we, we have the resolution before us, we can either approve it or, or deny it, so I'll take a motion for whatever the council, council's wishes are.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, and there's a second, any further discussion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor of approving the Enterprise Fund of Southwest Georgia Bank, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Item number fourteen is the issuing of the alcoholic beverage license to Fresco Italiano of Tifton that will be located at one oh three South Fifth Avenue. Do we have any information on that, or is there anything we need to discuss there, or...
Um, it is a new application, they're wanting to open up in July, so I went ahead and put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Um, this is going in Mr. Harper's building on Tipton Avenue, the buildings, um, uh, the...
It's the new, new restaurant going over here at the Twin Brick Warehouse? Yeah, this one right there.
The applicant, there's an applicant and a manager, we've done the background and processed the application on both of those, and staff is recommending approval.
Okay, and their application is in your packet on page one oh four, so, um, you've got the... Okay, so we have motions are second to approve this.
Second.
We have motion second, any further discussion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Excellent. All right, item number fifteen is a real- resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the hazard waste trust fund agreement, Ricky Hobbie.
That's exactly what it is, man, trying to bring you money in. This, this is a resolution we have to do every time we, uh, put an application for hazardous, our hazardous waste site. And what this is, is monitoring, they give you back a certain portion of the monitoring. So, we have submitted the application, this is our next step for y'all, just to prove, uh, the city manager...
Just housekeeping, councilman?
Yeah, that's what we did.
Mayor Consol, so we did receive this from the state just a couple of weeks ago, uh, stating that we had to turn around this in, in a certain amount of time. That's why it's before you tonight for, uh, for this action, I couldn't carry it till July because of the timeline.
Sure, okay.
It's a, it's a twenty-two thousand dollar refund reimbursement sitting out there, so that's what the application is for.
Okay, excellent.
And then we'll get y'all to do another resolution to accept what's...
Gotcha, okay, all right, is that clear? Any questions? Okay, I'll call for the, um, motion to authorize the city to move forward on this.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion second.
Second.
A motion second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, under other business...
Pete, uh, one second, Pete, will you do be a... Pete, uh, one second. Pete, will you do me a favor on that since that is a joint, uh, service with the, the county? Will you let them know what we're doing here, that we're gonna be getting?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Wes. Uh, if you recall, we did remove item sixteen from the agenda, so we'll move on to item seventeen under other business and that's approving the contact, contract with Three G's Auction Company. Pete, do you wanna present that?
I, I do, uh, this is, uh, with regards to the, um, surplus sale that we're gonna have. We have to have a auctioneer. Becky helped me with this. Uh, we did solicit quotes, uh, from auctioneer company and, uh, the lowest bid was Three G's. They have an eight percent commission and a ten or thirteen percent buyer's premium, so it's very low considering the, the market and what we will have to sell, so I, I recommend that we have this contract in place to allow them to provide the services.
And the other, uh, bids were in your packets. You've got that.
Is there any reason, I guess I get a little nervous when I say two of a twenty percent and one at eight percent. I mean, that's not even close. Is there a reason why there would be that huge difference?
Yeah, from what I understand, Becky can say, one, a lot of, the two of them, Terry M. and Merritt, they do the bigger type auctions, so there's probably a little more overhead and Three G's is a kind of an independent, it's, uh, it's a-
Have we talked to people that have used them before?
Becky, have you had any references on that? Uh, we didn't. It's really, it's-
It's minor stuff. This is like, what, what is this? This is, what is being auctioned off?
Twenty-five hundred, I mean, it's a huge number of things.
Well, I know that, but I'm saying it's not like they're cars, right? I mean, or are they? I know they're lawnmowers and things like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and a piano and-
The auctioneer could be responsible for taking the list and moving the items one by one, getting the highest price, uh, making sure that if there's reserves, they stake to it, but they'll actually conduct the bidding, so it's done fairly. And she is a certified auctioneer, um, and does it professionally and, um, you know-
You'd have to be licensed, I believe, by the state as well.
That's right.
So there's state regulations for auctioneers. So it's taken license, obviously, or at least the state thinks they're all right.
It just, when I say two at twenty and one at eight, that just raises red flags to me.
They offer awards that can work in a life, many votes from multiple people, and all of this specifically does have, has won awards against us. So she's, she's good.
I'd be glad to get a couple of recommendations if you'd like to.
And their, their contracts, I mean, did you read through their contracts in your packet?
She, she's good, but sometimes she-
Chad Polk, you are such a- She loves cheap.
I understand. Nobody understands cheap better than this.
I know.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Well, uh, did we have a motion?
I remember having a motion.
Did we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second to approve Three G's?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Alright, all those in favor of approving Three G's auction, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, excellent. Uh, item number eighteen on our agenda is our board report. Uh, we've got the information in your packet. Uh, we have a couple of folks that do not wish to be reappointed. Uh, under the Historic Preservation Commission, Charles Steyer's term expired at the end of May. He does not wish to be reappointed. He has served a very long and, and very much appreciated, uh, time on that. Uh, on the, um, Tifton Planning and Zoning, as you can see, Julie Sharp, whose term expired, uh, or expires the end of June, does wish to re, be reappointed, but Major Battle does not. Were you gonna talk to him? Did we have a-
Yeah.
Okay, did he?
Uh, he decided he would, he, uh, he was a little bit busy and he couldn't attend. But I did talk to an application by, uh, Ms. Lamars Taylor, who lives in my district.
Is he on? Did, did he?
She, uh, she's-
Did she get that in? Oh, there it is. I see it. Lamars, okay.
Lamars, uh, Taylor.
Okay, okay.
Uh, Ms. Taylor, uh, is the person that I would recommend to replace Major Battle with because of her science love commitment.
Sure.
And she lives right in the community. Uh, we would, we'd represent it.
Exactly.
I, I would, I would like to.
Okay. Would you like to, uh, make a motion to appoint her and, uh, to reappoint Julie Sharp on planning and zoning and wrap that up in one motion or, or would you rather take them individually?
Yeah, we can take them all. Just take them all.
Okay, so you make a motion?
I'll make, uh, so will-
Okay. So we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? This is for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. So we have a new member for planning and zoning. And Jessica will be in touch with Ms. Taylor and, and thanking her for her volunteerism and then, uh, we'll let Julie Sharp know that she's being reappointed. Um, on the Historic Preservation Commission, we've got a couple of applicants here, as you can see. Um, if anybody would like to make a motion regarding that or if you'd like to take with that and we can address that at the next meeting. I'll leave that.
I'll move to appoint Chad Tollis to the HPC.
Excellent. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Wes. We have a motion to second to approve Chad Tollis to the HPC board. Any further discussion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, excellent. So we have a new HPC member, too. I think these three folks will do great work for the city of Tifton and thank them for their service. I don't see anything else on my agenda other than the city manager report. Pete?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, council, uh, the only update I have is Streetscape three is, is now progressing as it should. Thanks to Jeff and ESG for getting the contractor in here. Jessica's been helping with the paperwork and the crease has been on top of the contractor, too. So it has been a collective effort. We've had some stalls in the plan because of some, uh, information and we've worked through that with the DVA board, but it is now accelerating. As you can see, the sidewalk, uh, here is torn up. Uh, that did not meet ADA requirements, so that just has to come out and there'll be a, a, a lower grade to that, so those that are in wheelchairs won't go sailing off the end of the street. So, uh, th- these important things have to be considered with the plans. We're doing that. And, uh, I made it very clear that, you know, by this weekend, uh, forty-one, or the main street for the Great Race should be completed, so if the weather holds, we, we should be, we should be good. But I wanted to let you know that that's moving.
Excellent. And you mentioned the Great Race. I wanna remind everyone, that excellent event is going to be taking place on Saturday afternoon. Cars will be arriving around four, four-thirty. And boy, are we gonna have fun from there, so bring everybody downtown and, and enjoy the festivities. Do you have any other thing you wanted to add in the city manager report? Alright, anything else to bring for the council?
Twentieth Street, we're, we're moving closer to that date that was a guaranteed drop dead, gonna be Jeff West's guarantee that day, if I remember correctly.
I thought it was a consultation with you.
You threw him on a, hey, my bus just went by.
No, he, he doesn't, I, it's my, it's my responsibility. I have a thumb drive here. Uh, we talked today, in fact, um, and, uh, they are, they being astro, um, in, in our opinion, are behind. Um, so we'll be sending an email with some pictures, um, tonight, um, to the leaders of that company to say, I need a better schedule. The milling and paving, uh, folks were supposed to be here today. So I'm telling, they're telling me that the weather is delaying and I, I just said, there's nothing else to talk about with that. So I'll let you know as soon as I hear back from you, but Jeff is on top of that, um, and helping every step of the way to get this contractor finished.
Okay, so do we have a new date yet?
The ones that are gonna be here, uh, Monday to pave and still say in July twenty-first, I don't believe it. I believe twenty-first.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, and they told you, bring, that, that's what, they hadn't been here, but they had to show that they could do the work.
So we're, we're gonna send that email out, but we're on top and I'll let you know when, when we change. Yeah.
Any other business to come for us? Saying none? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Uh, Mayor, just a minute, please. Excuse me, thank you, Jessica. Um, I wanted to get your, um, input on something since July fourth is on Tuesday. We have a meeting on, work session on Monday. Do you still want to do that on Monday or do you want to postpone it for later in the week? You have a-
Well-
It's up to y'all. I, I have no confirmation.
Well, no, guys, uh, well, yeah, okay. We were gonna take vacation the fifth after, but we backed that off, so, yeah, I'm okay.
Yeah, you, you're doing it on, on July third. I won't be down.
It doesn't matter. I mean, I'm, I'm good for anything, isn't it?
Did you have a confirmation or anything? It, uh, it doesn't matter to us, whatever, whatever you-
I don't have a recommendation either.
Okay.
Keep it on Monday and we'll get it over and be done.
That's fine.
Alright.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We do.
Okay, alright, we are adjourned.